And we will call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for January the 11th, 2021. Uh, Ms. McGrew, can you call the role, please, ma'am?
Bill Hastings.
Here.
Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Rory Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Stockdick.
Here.
And Councilmember Dusty Teal.
Here.
You have a question?
Thank you, ma'am. You know, at this time, uh, I'd like to go ahead and have a moment of silence. Uh, we've lost our city engineer, David Line Decker. We've also lost Ms. Sharon Rhodes, who was a huge part of KKB. She was an emeritus board member, served many years. And we also, uh, have lost Dr. Mark Bing, who was our health authority for many years. So if you don't mind, value his, and let's just have a moment of silence and silence in honor of these three individuals. All right. We will move on to item number two, which is our invocation, pledge to the U.S. flag and Texas flag. Tonight, we are honored to have Pastor Ethan Fisher with the soon-to-be Gateway, well, not soon-to-be Gateway Church. Uh, they've been around a long time, but this church is moving to our city. So Pastor Ethan, if you would, uh, lead us in our, offer our invocation for us, and then after that, we will have Captain Brian Wojtek, who will lead us in the U.S. pledge and the Texas pledge. Pastor Ethan?
Great. Let's pray together. Well, Father, we just thank you for your goodness. We thank you for, uh, the, the city of Katy. I thank you for every single leader that's here. I just pray right now that you would give, um, all of them grace, grace to them, grace to their families as they navigate and lead during this time, even with the loss that was just mentioned. I pray that you would give them wisdom that can come from above to be able to operate in the spirit of excellence and be able to operate in a way, um, that they're able to make the right decision at the right time. And then, Lord, I just pray for every single person that they would have courage, courage to know what to do, courage to know when to do it. And I just pray that your name would be glorified and that it would be to the benefit of others. Thank you for all that you're doing in the city of Katy. I pray that you continue to overwhelm these people in the city of Katy with your richest blessings. And so in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and, uh, we look forward to your opening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for having me.
Uh, Captain Wojtek.
All right, I'll rise for the American pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
Moving on, we will go to item number three is public comments, and I would like to remind everybody that, uh, you will have three minutes to speak on any agenda item, any item that is not on the agenda and that City Council is not able to respond to you. If you would like to participate, uh, via teleconference, uh, please press far nine to raise your hand. And at this time, anybody that wishes to speak can do so.
Mayor Hastings, I have received a written comment to be read into the public records from Durand Dowdell at 3226 Teal.
Okay.
To the mayor and council for your consideration. To honor the dedication of David Line Decker to the city of Katy, I pro- I propose that we name what is currently known as Town Park Detention, Line Decker Landing. I'm sure there will be other ideas generated. I just wanted to make sure my sentiments were known. Thank you and best regards, Durand Dowdell.
Thank you, Becky. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Seeing none.
All right, then we will move on to item number four. Item number four, uh, I'm sorry, item number four, anybody wishing to speak, this is, uh, any item that is on the agenda, please press far nine to raise your hand, and, uh, if you'll state your name and address, we will call.
Seeing none at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. We will move on to item number five. Item number five is a update to City Council and discussion on ongoing renovation of downtown, uh, Katy Plaza project and any or all future phases. This was requested by Councilmember Janet Court and Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Chris Harris, and this is for discussion only.
Okay, Mayor, uh, this is, uh, I've got Chris LeBlanc, that is the, the project engineer for the city plaza. He is, he is with us also. And, um, I guess what we want to do is, is kind of have an open discussion as to what the plaza is now, what it might have looked like in the past. Uh, and maybe, you know, some discussions that council wants to maybe have, uh, for the future, since we now own Thomas Park, we have the land across the street. But I do have Chris with us, and I will, we'll let him kind of walk what the current, what the current project is. Chris, you want to go ahead and start?
Good evening, members of council. Uh, first of all, I'd like to just start real quick and, and say our sincere condolences to, uh, everyone at the city of Katy with the loss of David Line Decker. As a fellow engineer, really enjoyed working with him, uh, for the years, uh, that I've been involved with the city of Katy. Uh, as far as the project at hand, uh, where we, yeah, as many of you know, this project has been going on for quite some time and, uh, many different challenges along the way. Uh, unfortunately, uh, COVID and, and the constraints of COVID, um, during the last calendar year caused us to arrive at a project where, um, we had to ask ourselves last year, well, how can we, how can we move this project forward, uh, and make the space usable? Uh, while we, uh, continue to try to work towards the ultimate vision, uh, that was the advisory council, city council, uh, which is, uh, the renderings that we've all seen along the way. Uh, so the current project at hand that is, is currently under construction consists of a landscape, uh, component and a hardscape component. The hardscape component is, uh, to put, uh, concrete sidewalks and a plaza area to fin- essentially finish out the civic center area, both behind and on the side, that what would be the south side of the civic center. Uh, that'll make that space completely usable, uh, make it fully functional. Uh, and also continue to try to work towards our plan of the future. It, it includes improvements that are part of our ultimate vision there and part of everybody's vision there. So it doesn't include, uh, wasted items. We didn't want to go put something on the ground that was gonna get torn up, uh, 12 months from now, and, and everybody sits around and says, well, why did we do that? Uh, so that's one part of the, of the, uh, project. The other part is the landscape project, which consists of, uh, some lam- landscape improvements along, uh, Third Street. Uh, we've got some, uh, street trees. We've got some, uh, believe three dedication trees that were important, uh, to, to get in the ground. Uh, and then generally, what we've got is some cleanup of the existing Harvest Plaza, uh, area as well as, uh, what we originally concepted was seeding of seeding in, in basically a temporary irrigation system, uh, below grade, uh, for the balance of the property out there. So it makes it a usable park space in the short term while we continue to, uh, raise money essentially, uh, through the various funding sources that we have for the project, uh, to move additional phases along. I know, uh, there, we've contemplated cutting this, uh, piece of the pie up in many different ways. Uh, but this would allow this space to be usable for the public, uh, while we continue to evaluate how to move forward with the remaining parts of the project. So I know later in the agenda today, uh, we have a proposal for you all to consider, uh, which would be to, uh, further accelerate the development of this site by, uh, asking for your approval, uh, to increase some spending, uh, to allow us to sod the entire plaza area rather than seed, uh, essentially just to accelerate the delivery of this project and make it essentially usable very early on in the spring, uh, which was our real, real goal here. So I'll stop there or pause, uh, if there's any questions or if Byron, if you'd like to add anything, uh, to that explanation.
Uh, just a little bit, like, issue with Center Point and, uh, moving a pole and moving the electrical, can you go into that a little bit?
Yes, sir, certainly can. So part of why there has been a delay in some of the progress out there, uh, which I'm sure all of you are concerned with, uh, had to do with, uh, relocation of an existing Center Point service to the Civic Center. Uh, as part of construction of the Civic Center, the power that serves that building, which was the old City Hall Council Chambers, uh, that never got relocated, uh, just through the process of that project. And so the old service pole, uh, that was back there by the little small parking lot in the back of old City Hall, uh, or old City Hall Council Chambers, um, that became the service, uh, for the new Civic Center. Uh, so part of our project through the various phases of it was to move that power service to a different location. Uh, what happened was, was that, a- as with, with most things revolving around Center Point, uh, that takes time and effort to coordinate. Uh, and unfortunately, they just don't move that fast, and it caused for us to have a delay on our project because the underground power that served the Civic Center was in conflict with one of the foundations for our, uh, trellis that is part of the hardscape project, uh, that would be at the back of the Civic Center. So that has delayed, uh, the concrete placement. Uh, and, and the reason why that project is not further along, but all those things have been rectified. Uh, so now we are, are ready to remobilize and continue on with the construction and, uh, pretty confident at this point that there shouldn't be any further delays.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Chris, um, has, have we, do we have a date from Center Point as to when they're going to remove that pole, or can you, uh, proceed with what you need to do and work around the pole?
So we, we are in Center Point's schedule. Uh, we've been in their schedule for a couple of weeks now. Uh, but the good thing is, is where the pole is, is not going to prevent us, uh, from continuing forward with construction. Uh, the, the plan is it's probably gone in about six weeks. Uh, but that doesn't cause any concern for us moving forward, uh, and continuing on with our work.
Chris?
Uh, well, I will tell you, as a member of this council, this project has taught me never to, uh, give dates to the public on when something has been, will be done. So, um, you know, I, I'm not going to be negative, but I'm just going to say it's real unfortunate how this is all played out and, uh, you know, downtown businesses don't like looking at something under construction for four years. So, um, I, I would just, you know, I'm just conveying in a very nice way to the city administration, when can we get this done? So businesses aren't looking at something that looks under construction. I mean, we, we can, we just get done with something, and then we can, we can reassess, in my opinion. So it's, it's not good what's been happening down there, and I don't think anybody here is saying it is, but I'm just very nicely conveying it needs to be done. Some phase needs to be completed.
Uh, and along something, I was going to say something similar to Chris, but, um, I, I, I don't want the pole to delay, like, if we just, if we agree and we vote on putting down the sod, I don't want the pole being there to delay that. But on the other hand, when they come in with whatever equipment they need to remove the pole, I don't want to tear up the sod that we just put down. So if there's anything we can do, I mean, as a city, can we, can we take out the pole since there's no power there? I saw Byron grimace. I'm gonna say that's a no.
Uh, I, I don't want.
That's a no, that's a no.
Well, Art, Art's, Art's saying no, I know.
Okay.
Don't go touch it, don't go touch the three-phase.
But anyway, that, I guess that's something to keep, um, I guess we have a discussion when we get to that next agenda item. I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead. Um, so one of the reasons I wanted this to come to council so we could have a discussion, when all of this started, I think it was, uh, and Byron, correct me if I'm wrong with my dates, I think it was like 2013, 2014, when the city started taking a hard look at, at what we could do about the downtown plaza. That's when you contacted the Texas Downtown Association, and they gave you guidelines, and I, and I appreciate you sending it to me. I hadn't seen it, um, until this week. So, I mean, y'all have just been marching down these guidelines, which is great. But a lot of things have changed since this was done back in February of 2013. So I wanted, uh, I, I don't know if everybody has seen this plan that's in our packet. So I like this. I want to continue forward with that. I don't want anybody to feel like I want to stop this work, but I think this is a good opportunity for us to stop and take a look at a bigger picture. Since we now have, like Byron mentioned, we have Thomas Park, we put in new bathrooms there, we just did the, bought the Rylander property. Let's get a bigger, a vision for how we want this whole area to work five, 10, 15 years from now. So let's get a bigger vision. We don't have to have a, it would be phased. Chris Harris and I, Councilmember Harris and I were having a conversation. Um, he was saying, all I see is dollars, but it doesn't have to be all at one time. It can be a phased approach. But I don't want to get into a position where we put something in the plaza and then when we start really looking at the Rylander property, we go, oh, man, I wish we wouldn't have put that at the plaza. It would be better over here at the Rylander property. So, um, in that regard, um, I guess, I don't know if this is a Byron question or an Art project or an Art question. Is there, I'd also like to get community input on what, what would they like this to see? Um, everybody's seen the original drawing that has an amphitheater and a stage and an outdoor museum. And when I look at the original, that, when I look at that, I see a lot of concrete. Um, and I think we want, to me, that's not an old town feel. It's very pretty. I'm not saying that, but, um, I'd like to get community input on do they want something like this, or do they want something that is more old, small-town feel? So is there a way we could set up a, um, uh, an email address that's like plaza@cityofkaty.com where residents can send in their emails with their opinions, maybe suggestions, what they'd like to see at the plaza, maybe what they'd like to see it on the Rylander property, and we could just get some community input. And, and then six months from now, or whatever, however long, whatever timeframe we decide on, then do we want to maybe pull together another commission to go out and look at this, uh, and take it forward? So that's my thoughts. I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna step back and, and let you guys express your opinion.
I, I'll just say real quick, we, I mean, we can set that email up if that's, it's not, it wouldn't be difficult for us to set up an email, uh, if you wanted to get input, and, and I'll let, I'll let the other council people.
Hey, Janet, I think the other idea is we could have a workshop and everybody could participate in it, and then we're all on the same call. We get to hear everybody's information. Maybe they have ideas, maybe they have drawings, and then they can submit it, and we can all, you know, do a workshop together.
Well, it's kind of what we're doing now. I think Art can correct me, because even if we have a workshop, I don't think people can call in and, and participate in that discussion. Is, am I incorrect?
You, you can set it up that way. We just have to post it that way. We can post it where we set it up, where it's, it's like a, a, a public, public, uh, forum. So you can, we can set it up that way to allow.
Okay, I didn't realize that we could do that.
Yeah, yes, you can.
And I like what Councilmember Court was saying about a lot of concrete. I want to see more grass there, in my own personal opinion. So quickly, maybe we could come up with several different architectural designs and do a Survey Monkey or something to that effect. I don't know if that's legit, but I think it'd be a good idea so we can get more input from the people and not just some random thoughts or grass, you know, so we can actually show them what we're looking at. And I think it'd be a really good idea so they can actually vote and show us unofficially and show us what they're looking for. But I definitely don't want all the concrete that's currently planned.
Are, are you done, Rory?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, I like what he said, but I think he's a step ahead, in my opinion. Um, I'd like to get some input because architectural drawings are going to cost money. And so we want to have some type of input, I would think, from the public to kind of direct, you know, what kind of drawings we want. But I think that's a good idea, and, and that's really kind of where I think we would end up getting to at some point and, um, you know, possibly putting it on a, one of the May elections or something. I don't know. Um, but, um, I like his thought process. I think he and I are on the same, uh, wavelength, uh, but I still would like to get some of input before we invest in architectural drawings.
Yeah. I have a question for the immediate task, and you may have addressed this, Chris. I'm sorry if you did, and I, I missed it. So right now, once the pole is taken care of, you're talking about just sodding the area? Is that all we're talking about for the immediate?
Yeah, yes.
Now, are you planning on, because they're talking about doing away with some of the concrete and things, are you talking about sodding that whole area where right now the drawings are showing concrete, or are you just, is that what you're?
Yes, our, our current, our current, um, and, and it's coming later in the, in the, in the meeting, but we would want to sod the whole area right now with grass. And, and then that way, it's, it's, it's usable early spring, and then we have time to kind of design. If y'all don't want as much concrete, then, you know, Chris, I mean, Chris, Chris and them have, have worked this project where we, we have it, you know, phased in, we had it. Yeah, so, so there's ways to, to, to make it softer. This is what you get. This is, this is the sod, okay? So this is what we're planning on coming in and sodding. And, and what we will, what we'll do, Janet, to make sure that we don't, when, when they have to come and move the poles, we know, we know what direction they're coming in to take the pole out.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that that's not sotted, and then once they're finished, we'll sod the rest of that, right, Chris?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and back, back to what you have on the screen, you're still going to do the, the planners at the south end of the community center and the plantings at the, uh, the, back there behind the dedication trees? That's still a part of this phase?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what you see on the screen here is our current plan that's under construction.
Okay.
I, I would say the first thing to do if you want to, uh, Councilmember Court, is I would, uh, just set the email up and, and just see what kind of response we get. Um, kind of put it out there on our social media pages and put it out there in the, in the press and see what kind of responses we get. And from there, um, maybe we could come back and share that with council, since we're going to have it activated. It's going to be able to be used. It's going to be able to be worked. So, um, maybe that's our first step.
I, 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 I think so. And then I think maybe from those ideas, if we wanted to do a workshop, we could, or we could use those ideas to come up with some conceptual designs like Councilmember Robertson suggested.
Okay.
Uh, I just hey, is making it usable because the commission and workshop, that sounds like another term in office to get something done. So can we just be sure that what we're doing today is going to make it usable in the near term and, and be sure when it goes out on social media that we're clear that it is usable now after this is done and that we're just reassessing it maybe post-COVID, something like that. But we just need to be clear, what is done tonight, what we approve, it's going to be usable.
Yes, that would, we need to make it clear that we're not taking anything off of this.
Right. You're adding, you're adding to that, because you were just going to have seed, and we would like to.
Yes.
Sod, right.
Now, in the short term here with what we're going to do tonight, what about the bathroom situation? Is it a possibility to use the Civic Center for, for bathrooms in the near term before we decide in the future what we're going to do?
Well, I mean, right now with COVID, it's, it's kind of up in the air. If you have, if, if.
Fair enough.
Market, if you have a market days, I mean, they're bringing in porta potties. Uh, but I would say, you know, if we're, if we're further along and, and things are looking good with the vaccine, and all of a sudden you had an event out here and you didn't have an event in the Civic Center, you could, you could lock off the main area of the Civic Center and just have the bathrooms open for that event. So, I mean, there is a way to do that. Um, so the building is built that way.
I, I don't think the issue is, I mean, yes, issue is an event, uh, I mean, events, you know, they have to bring in porta potties because there's just so many. But I think it would help the downtown businesses if we could maybe open those bathrooms in the Civic Center at least Monday through Friday when they're open. Is that a possibility? I mean, they're only open from 10 to 5.
Great idea.
Okay, I, I'm, but am I? So basically, I have bathrooms, I mean, if you, if, so I mean, it's a, Art, COVID, all the things that, I mean, I guess it could fog it every night.
Yeah.
Wanting people to come into the building, I guess that's the question. Right now, I've got two inspectors in there. I, I really wouldn't want to. No, I'm actually at three. I think I have two, maybe three people there.
So we have employees in the Civic Center still? I mean, the, yeah, the, the Civic Center?
Yes, yes.
And Byron?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, does interior doors have locks? Because IT is telling me they don't.
We'd have to put them on.
Yeah, and, and then what, what, all you, you would need to do is just, just maintain your, your COVID protocols. I mean, you, you develop your protocol on how to, how to clean it. I mean, if you're going to use it for the public, you just make sure you develop protocols on, on how to, how to make it clean for the public. So and that's.
I mean, is that something we can look into once, maybe I get these inspectors back? I mean, I, I, you know.
How long do you foresee the inspectors being over there?
Indefinitely at this point.
Can we move them over to the, uh, visitor center? Is it Jess the only one that's over there?
No, I've got two over there. I've got Jess and, uh, Alicia. Alicia's.
Oh, Alicia's over there still?
So, um, and I haven't, I haven't got the third floor built out, so we're, we're waiting for that to come back.
Can we use COVID funds to build us a bathroom since, uh, we can't use the Civic Center to?
No, no.
Uh, well, if you only have, how many inspectors did you say you had in there? Two?
I think I've got two.
Okay, because at one time you had four in the visitor center. If you only, if you have. If you only, if you have two inspectors and you just have two employees over there now. Can you move them back over there and, and you'd have four like you did before?
Are, are you planning on just using, opening up the bathrooms or what area?
Just, just the bathrooms, Art.
Well, you just, you just set up, set up the protocols and be able to use the bathroom to clean, you clean before, you clean, you clean after. I, I mean, they're, they're bathrooms. And so, so, I mean, you just set up, set up protocols there to, to clean them, you de-clean them, de-clean them before, you de-clean them after. The, of the, the public space, you just make sure that you got the public space so that people can't wander into it, but, but the bathrooms, you just, you just do bathrooms. And just like.
Let us, let us, uh, let us look into, firstly, I think I got to get locks on the interior doors. Because I don't think I have locks.
That's really, that's really easy.
So.
Yeah, we do now have a comment from the public on the discussion. Casey Reyna at 5:01 PM, as a resident and former employee, I'm concerned that city council now has concerns about the design of the plaza.
City council. Well, well, back on, back on. Council, you were talking about, talking about on that, I think if you look, if you look at, at what you want to do as far as the protocols. You, you can see places such as, such as Buc-Ee's and some of the other, other places, uh, the, uh, center, sports centers. And, and pull together some of their protocols that they use for, for when the public that comes in and out, how often they have to clean, what type of things they need to, to, to do to deep clean those. And, and you can, you can use those same type protocols which, which will, you know, reduces your, your risk. I mean, it's just like, just like if it was opening up to the mural center or just like you got, you got Buc-Ee's. You know, there's just certain COVID protocols that you take to clean and, and re-clean and make sure it stays clean.
Can we use CARES money to, um, clean those bathrooms? Because I know it's going to be an extra cost to the city.
Probably, probably not, it probably not, it just depends on, on, on how we, what, how we're using that project, we may. We, we probably would be able to do it if it was for the day-to-day work, but for this special event, that's probably not going to qualify. And we're talking about just doing it for, for a special event, if we were.
No, no, we're not talking, we're, we're not talking about just special events.
What, what do we?
Well, I.
Janet, you're wanting to do it like Monday through Friday, 8 to 5?
Yeah.
Take a hour?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because right now they're losing customers, they come in, they need to go to the bathroom or whatever, they get in their car and they drive away and. They don't always come back, so.
Who is it that we're saying for the, for the, uh, for the customers out in the area there, for the citizens in the area?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me do this, let me, let me check on the locks and let me know, I, I hear what you're saying, 8 to 5. Let me check on the locks. And figure out how we can get it done.
Okay, just. Yeah, I, I know we're not trying to make decisions, but, but. I just feel like we need to do something to help the downtown merchants, they've been really suffering through. You know, the, the street tear ups and, and then COVID hit and every time they start to get back on their feet, something knocks them down or, or something happens, so. Um, let's look into it and see if, if we can make it happen. We can, we can't.
But we look into it, we may, we may have to, when we think about it and we go through the coast, so think of this, if we were. Doing a public bathrooms, if we were putting public bathrooms out there, how would that qualify? Let's, let's walk through that, we might, we might be able to get there.
Yeah, we can look at the Open Texas website too for some of the protocols for other facilities on what they're having to implement.
Right, but I think we may be able to get there for that CARES, we may be able to get that, we may be able to do that, so, but let's take a look.
I have two additional comments, um, from Ms. Reyna, we had a committee that made those plans. They worked for years on that led by Doyle Calendar, the committee was comprised of residents, downtown business owners and other key individuals, that design is what the committee decided upon. End of comments.
Okay, so let me, let me see what I can do and then come back for an action. Action, but hopefully next time I should have all the answers for you.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on the plaza? Okay, having none, we'll move on to item number six, which is discuss, take action on purchase, installation. And monitor a security camera and/or related equipment at the city of Katy Dog Park. This was requested by council member Robertson. Mayor Pro Tim Harris and I know that council member court has been working on this for a while too.
And mayor, I had spoke with, uh. Mr. A Bear on Friday and so I just, I'm going to yield to city administrator. Uh, for more information before we get started.
Uh, well, uh, Chris, we, we did have a meeting, so, so the good news is I don't need you guys to take action, we went ahead and. Got with, um. Chief Diaz and, and Michelle and, and my team here, we figured out how we're going to be able to put that camera up. Pay for it and get it done, it's already been ordered. Uh, I, I haven't received the actual when the installation date will be complete, but. It's, um. It's definitely moved forward, so I would say that maybe. You might want the chief or David, we have David here too, to kind of explain how that camera might help.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, go ahead.
Um, when I met with, um, Noe and Michelle back on November 10th, we had identified a, a pole. And then at one point in talking to you Byron, we had talked about putting it on top of the municipal building. What location was decided on?
Uh, chief, you want, you want? Good evening, everybody, uh. We decided on the pole because of the clarity and the reception. From the pole to our dispatch station where we're going to monitor it. So Mr. A Bear, if you don't know, the walkthroughs on Tuesday and the camera weather permitting will be installed on the 19th.
Very good.
That, that's a hard date, so, uh, hopefully, uh, weather permitting, uh, so, uh, for us, uh. It was functional, you know, uh, the council was very concerned about. Persons unfortunately having to drop off a pet. Inside of our, our, our kennel and, and David can attest to that, uh. Uh, it happens on occasion and, uh, we think that will. Put a stop to it immediately. So it's, it's twofold, it helps us there and it helps us not having the excess pets inside our kennel as well.
So, um, since you've already taken action on this Byron, do you, does there need to be a motion to, um? I don't know, pull this from the agenda or what would the motion be or is it just?
You, you would not need, you would not need a motion, you would not need anything, you just move on to the next, next item.
Can I make some comments about it real quick, nothing, just I've thought of some stuff to talk about with it.
Yes, whatever.
I mean, I would just, this is a, this is a huge victory for animals in Katy, uh, and I wanted to thank council member court for starting the camera conversation. And council member Harris for adding it to the agenda, I'm just proud we could all work together to get this moving and on the agenda today. Uh, we cannot allow for animals to be dumped at any of our city parks. And this number was not small, we must stop this practice. Community education is a must going forward on how to use rescues to make sure if anyone has to get up their dog, they can do it safely. I am thrilled that our police department will be monitoring the camera as they are next door and can be on the scene within minutes. Today is a great step in the right direction, but it's only a start. Changes must happen on how we, our animals are treated from top to bottom. I have had many conversations with residents and the message is crystal clear, we must protect our animals. And pets and I plan to work with the mayor, council and staff on positive changes over the next term. I'm an animal lover and we have to make sure that they are treated humanely and right. That's it, thank you.
I just, I have one question and comment, uh, how are we going to identify the people that are leaving off the dogs, I mean, is the camera also? Uh, videoing the parking lot for license plates or? Are we just doing it by facial recognition or I mean, how, how are we going to track back the, uh? People that are actually leaving, the animals there?
Chief Diaz?
Council member Theo, the camera will essentially have four eyes on it, one will be. A fish eye that will zoom towards the entire, uh, park, will catch most of it. One will be directed at the gate and one at the parking lot when people drive up. Uh, again, uh, we hope to capture the vehicle description, things like that, because sometimes it happens in the middle of the night. So, uh, we, we've impressed upon the staff to. Monitor the park, uh, now that we have a little bit more presence at the park, uh, we, we haven't had incidents like that in a while, but unfortunately with COVID. Uh, some families are not able to keep their pets. Uh, and they're, they're having to make hard decisions and a lot of the 501(c)(3)'s. That we deal with on a daily basis are, are struggling with the excess amount of pets that are being turned in as well. Uh, so David's on there now, uh, David can, can attest to that, that the, the amount is getting a little bit hectic for us. And, uh, I, I'd just like to congratulate David, he does a phenomenal job for us. Uh, he, he is a, a home run hitter in my opinion, he's been with the city a long time, so I can't thank him enough, but David, you can, you can speak if, if you're there. Uh, I know you're muted, if you can hear me about, uh, gi- give, uh, council member Theo just an example of it.
Yes, I'm here, hi, um, the camera, anything that can help at the dog park situation. We don't have, uh, when we have an incident there, it could be a bad incident, but other, there's. Other alternatives than just dumping the animals, the, if the animal is within our jurisdiction and is dumped at the dog park, we can normally get them home. Our problem is people can drive from a long distance and find the dog park or find a place and dump the animal. When that happens, it drains our resources, the, the city of Katy has to maintain. Getting these animals back home and, and locating their owners. And with the dog regis, with the dog park, if we start, if we can get the citizens to register their pets like they're supposed to. So we have records of these animals and, and keep microchips update and help us, because time to time, people say. Well, you know our dog, you know this was our dog, but here in the city we have so many. And I can't memorize all the dogs and until you can teach your pet how to speak. And put a microchip and get them registered with the city, but this camera is going to help us a lot. Not only with the, the dog dumping which has slowed down quite a bit, because now the park is opened more, it's not as wooded. Because of the subdivisions that's surrounding it now, but there's also disturbances that occur in that park. And if people walk in and they see a camera, maybe their attitude will change a little bit. Knowing that there's a possibility somebody is watching, because it's so easy for them to get. Aggravated, tempers flare, especially when it comes to your pets, pets are like your children, people get upset. Tempers flare in that dog park and then there's, it becomes a disturbance, so this is a, this is going to be a good thing and it's going to be a good thing for the city. It's going to move us in the right direction.
And David brings up a great point that it will increase safety and security for not only the pets, but also the animals. And so, uh, I do have a question for Chief Diaz or David, whoever can answer it. What type of enforcement do we have or do we have? Rules on the books or laws on the books or for dumping a dog? Do we need to increase it, do we need to change it or is it adequate now?
So council member Robertson, I've reached out to the Harris County, uh, the SPCA, the investigator to come. Uh, and visit, she has met with David, uh, and we're moving forward, but it is a crime, you know, it's, it's in the penal code to drop off your pet and things like that, so. Uh, we, we've kind of formed a bond with, with, uh, with Ms. Lowen and, uh, she's. A hundred percent in trying to help us if we do find the person who dumps an animal, a pet, cat, whatever it is in the park. Uh, we, we are, we're, she's a phone call away to come assist us with carrying it further. Uh, to, 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 to charge that person and it's a, it's a tough situation, you know, you have people that can't care for their animals anymore. Uh, uh, and, and then it's a tough decision to give up their pet, but sometimes they do, so. We'll, we'll mitigate it a, and, and, or mediate it and try to approach it with kindness first. To make sure that, that we're making the right decision on the person. Uh, that, that's, that's, I hate to use the word dump, but that's leaving their dog, their, their, their pet there, so we'll make sure that it's for the right reason, because. They may think that, well, there's water there, there's shelter, someone's going to come check it and things like that and. And they may feel that they're doing the right thing instead of just, you know, dropping it off on Bartlett Road in Waller County, you know, it's, 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 it's safe, it's clean, there's water. So there's a lot of circumstances that surround. Uh, uh, someone leaving a pet at, at a spot like that, so hopefully we can, we can, uh, it. It only takes one, one enforcement action, I think people will get the message that we're serious about it to not do it. And hopefully we can put some signage as well that, you know, it's under monitor by the police department and that'll just stop it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to item number seven, item number seven is renovation to the Katy Manor Apartments. And we have a presentation by Robbie Myers with Arc's Advantage to renovate the Katy Manor Apartments requested by Mark Meyer on November 30th, 2020. And the legal documents were provided to the city on 1/4/21. Um, at this time, uh, Mr. Meyer, are you, you on?
Yes, sir, I, Robbie Meyer. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm with, uh, Arc's Advantage and we represent Feature Development, the owner of, of Katy Manor. Uh, Feature Development has been around since 1997 and they own about 1,700 units of affordable housing. Uh, 1,400 of those are family developments and about 300 of those are, uh, senior developments. Um. They are, th- this development has been on the ground since 1997, uh, and they purchased it and it is a. Uh, it was originally financed with, uh, USDA Agriculture, uh, United States Department of Agriculture funds. Uh, that funding will stay in place, uh, and we are. Applying to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for, uh, housing tax credits to rehabilitate the property. Uh, for that, uh, program, for the housing tax credit program. Uh, we are, are requesting, it, it's a, um, a competitive program and all the points, every point matters. Uh, so part of, of what we are asking from the city is a support resolution, it's the second highest scoring. Uh, item, uh, for our application, uh, and, uh. For, for the development, the support resolution is, uh, and also we are, are requesting. A, a $250, uh, deferment of fees or waiver of, of, uh, development fees and that's also a scoring item as well. Uh, that's a one-point scoring item, uh, but it, every point matters, uh, the USDA. Set aside for the housing tax credit program is highly competitive. Um, so every point that we can get is, uh, is valuable to us. Um, we are looking at, and I sent over a scope of work, I don't know if you have that in front of you. But we're looking at the, 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 just the hard cost for this particular development is estimated at just over $200 million. And this is a 48-unit development. Um, so you're looking at, at about $43,000 per unit, um. Looking, and that's just an estimate right now, we don't have our, um, our full, uh. Capital needs assessment completed yet, uh, those usually aren't done until, uh, the end of January, first part of February. Uh, for our application submission, which is due March the 1st. Uh, so, but those are our estimated costs right now, uh, and that's on the, uh, the estimated rehab line. Uh, if you can see that, I don't know if you can see my pointer, but it, it's right there, right under, uh, estimated rehab cost. Uh, and that, that the hard cost line is, is 2,060, 64,000, uh, and that's just the hard cost line. Uh. And then the ultimate, the, the overall development cost is, uh, a little over $5 million. Um. So that, that's what we're, we're looking for, uh, but we're asking for the, the council to support our application in essence. Uh, we submitted our pre-application this last Friday. Um, and we should be getting a, uh, application log from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, hopefully sometime this week. So we can see where we are in the competitive process. Uh, and then if we are competitive, then we will move forward and submit a full application, uh, for March 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. We will move on to item 7B, consider a resolution, Art rising the merit to acknowledge and confirm support of the rehabilitation of Katy Manor Apartments located at 5360 East history. And accept a waiver request from Pfizer Development Incorporated of the. and Accept a Waiver Request from Pfizer Development Incorporated of Development/Permit Fees in the Amount of $250, which is a one-time reduction. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just real quick and just looking at the, the plans, I think it's a worthy $250 investment from the city. The development's getting a playground for the children there at the apartment complex and they're, they're working on the sidewalks in the area. So I think that's a worthy investment for us to put forth. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, there's, there's a question from Councilmember Court, mayor.
I agree with what Chris said. It's a worthy investment. I just have one question. By waiving this permit fee, we are not putting ourselves in a position to have further obligations as this project goes on. It is purely a private.
Not at all.
I see head shaking. Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, that, that's the only thing besides the support resolution and that monetary ask that we're doing that, that's the only thing that we are requesting from the city. You won't have any further obligations. Sure.
All right. No further discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number eight. Consider agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign an Agreement for Emergency Services Between Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 37 and the City of Katy, Texas. This is in reference to Pin Oak Village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick for the question for, kind of frame this for the public. We're already providing the service and they have been paying, kind of on a handshake agreement. We're just inking this in writing. Is that correct, Byron?
That's correct.
That is correct. We've been providing service. They, they had a, a agreement for a small monetary amount, but we kind of got back to the table and said, we really need to be able to, to look at taxpayers and say, look, we're all paying our fair share to, to have our services. So they, they agreed upon it and now we're, we're going to move forward with, with our services continuing to be, you know, the, the number one services that we have. So our EMS and fire. But I do appreciate Art working on this. He worked very, very hard to make sure we, we got this done.
Any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine B, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Change Order Number One in the Amount of $8,923.61 for Adjustment to Irrigation and Landscape Items to the Construction of the Landscape Phase One to Serve City, Katy City Hall Plaza. The original contact, contract amount was $40,738. Total revised contract amount with change order is $49,661.61. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
And real quick, Byron, I'm sorry, Mr. Abar, as I read in there, it's 45 days completion is in, in the paperwork. Is that correct?
That is correct. 45 days.
Okay. And, and we're just amending what we previously approved by adding sod. Correct?
Use sod, correct.
Yeah, we just went from seed to sod.
Seed to sod, okay. And I know Earth First is a local company here in Katy, so glad that we're able to use them. So happy about that.
So I have a question. Do, are they going to have to wait until the, all the concrete, like for the patio is poured before they start putting any sod down?
Go to Chris on that. Chris, you know?
No, that's two different contracts by two different contractors and yeah, there's no overlap in the work. So we should be able to start the sod whenever irrigation is fully complete and all the grading is finished and we should be able to do that.
Okay. And is that when the 40, is the 45 days for the entire project or is that just for the sod?
No, that was for the project. The sod, we just have to, you know, that's a lot weather dependent. They usually like to cut it and get it delivered and put down in usually about a 72-hour timeframe.
So I guess the question for me, and, and I think it's probably in the back of Councilmember Harris's mind, is when does the clock start on the 45 days?
The clock's already been running on the 45 days and we'll work with, with Byron and his staff to get a good schedule update on the timeline for completion of all this work prior to the next council meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Well, that brings up, I, I just thought about this. I apologize. I would have asked for this ahead, but Janet just on my mind. Byron, should we go ahead and put this on the agenda for the next council meeting? Just to go ahead and have an update?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to re-put this on the next agenda. So I'll just need a second for a second person.
Second.
Any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 10. Consider an ordinance appointing the Katy Heritage Park Board members Adrian DeVitz, City Representative, Reappointment for a two-year term. Linda McKeskey, City Representative, Reappointment, one-year term. And Jared Carden, Joint Member, two-year term. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appointing City of Katy representatives and joint representative to Katy Heritage Park Board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 10. 10B, Consider an Ordinance Increasing the Groundwater Reduction User Fees Charged Each Single Family Residential, Multi-Family Residential and Commercial Structure and Unit. Payable to the West Harris County Regional Water Authority to $1.94 per 1,000 gallons of water used. And this will be effective January the 15th of 2021. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please, ma'am?
An ordinance increasing the groundwater reduction user fees charged each single-family residential, multi-family residential and commercial structure and unit payable to West County, I'm sorry, West Harris County Regional Water Authority to $1.94 per 1,000 gallons of water used effective January 15, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question real quick. Now this, because we're paying it directly to the West Harris County Regional Water Authority. This is not city-related. This is not city mandate. Where's this mandate coming from? Well, the mandate's actually coming from the West Harris County Water Authority. Art, do you want to speak on, on their authority?
Yes, yes. They, they have, they have the authority as a subsidence district to regulate our water intake. We have, we have two districts that, that regulate that, our, our water intake that we take. One from Harris County and one from, from Fort Bend County, their subsidence district that, that put limits on, on what we can take. And, and the way they regulate that, they charge us by certain amounts. And the more you use, the higher rate you have to pay in order to, to make us move from groundwater to, to other water. So, so, so that's, that's why we have to pay that fee. What you are currently doing as a city is you are not passing along 100% of the, of the fee that's being charged. You subsidize that, that fee through your, through your budget. So it's not just a straight pass, pass, pass-through like you'll find some cities will do that are regulated. You guys are paying money from your city budget to reduce the actual fee that's being charged by the, by the district.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item 11 and pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, we will now have reports from council members. And we will start with Dusty Thiel.
Yes, I know this has already been covered earlier, but it's just personal. Like to recognize a couple of people. One is City Engineer David Line Decker, served with him on the city zoning board for, I don't know, it was eight or nine years. And he was just, you know, always there. He was always able to answer stupid questions I'd ask, never made you feel like that. Just, you know, just very personable, knowledgeable and served the city of Katy for such a long period of time. I just want to recognize him. And then also Dr. Bing for what he's done for Katy ISD, for Katy Fire Department. But, you know, also he had the miniature train set around his house. And, you know, my kids, we grew up right across the street from there and I don't know how many times he'd take them around the tracks and it was just, you know, such a great loss to the city for both of those, those men there. That's it.
Thank you, Dusty. Rory?
I had the opportunity to tour our police department, fire department and the public works and boardwalk over the past couple of weeks. I'd like to thank Councilmember Harris for helping to arrange this. Chief Diaz, interim Chief Parker and the Public Works Administrator Lane Loubringer have some really incredible staffs. These individuals are amazing with their dedication and hard work, making our city safe and beautiful for, for us to enjoy. I'd also like to thank Byron Abar for the tour of the boardwalk. This is going to be a great addition to our city. I cannot wait to take my family to some of the restaurants and enjoy the walk around the lakes. It was enlightening to me to see how these departments work together and keep our city moving forward. And finally, I, along with everyone up here, wish our Katy Tigers the best of luck this Saturday in the state championship. I will be there cheering on the football team, the band, drill team and cheerleaders. Good luck to all of them and safe travels.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gore?
Um, I want to also talk about David Lion Decker, the, the, we had three outstanding pillars of our community recently pass away. But the one I knew the best was David Lion Decker. And even though I didn't know him very well, and if everybody on this screen knows that he and I butted heads, but he was still, he was always took, he was always a gentleman. He was always patient. He explained things like Dusty, my, my dumb questions, he would explain it. As you drive through town, you may not realize, but every, every corner you're touching, turning or whatever, you're seeing something that Lion Decker, David Lion Decker had a hand in. So I had been kind of, I was glad to hear on the public comments, a recommendation on how to remember him because I've been trying to think of, of ways to, so I, I hope that we do as a council and with the mayor, come up with a really good way to honor David and his legacy to the city. The other thing I'm going to do is, I think this commission is sometimes kind of overlooked. And that's the Charter Review Commission. I have listened in on two of their last meetings. And it's really a tough job that these people do. And I just want to thank them. I don't know any of them. But I want to thank them for their, their time and their commitment to reviewing the charter. They are going through it paragraph by paragraph, line by line, and it is sometimes that wording in, in whatever is overwhelming and and confusing. So I want to thank them for their time and their commitment. And again, go Katy Tigers. I mean, great way to continue the tradition. I hope you come home with a state, well, I'm going to change that. I know you're going to come home with the state title. Well, we're all going to be looking forward to celebrating y'all. As Councilmember Robertson said, y'all have safe travels and and go get them.
Thank you.
I had to catch myself there.
Councilmember Harris?
Well, like, like Dusty and Janet said, David and Dr. Bing, I know there's been several staff members, like significant others have passed away. And Sharon Rhodes, when I moved to Katy, when I went, one of the first times I went to church, she was one of the first famous people of Katy that I've met and got to know. And so it's, it's really just heartbreaking. This week had two meetings with Katy Area Chamber of Commerce and went over to Young Ranch for a inaugural neighborhood watch meeting. So that was a lot of fun. And of course, Katy Tigers will be in their 15th state appearance, going for title number nine. I know Rory, captain of the Katy football team, 1994, number 68, go Tigers. And so he was in that second state appearance and his son is on the team, which is going to be on the 15th state appearance. So and myself, I'll just have to rag on my wife. She's on the band in 1997 and my daughter is in the band this year. And so just a little proud. So what can I say? Go Tigers. I know everybody up here has some connection with Katy football and the legacy. So anyway, it's an exciting time of year. Thank you.
Councilmembers talking.
I'd just like to piggyback along with everyone else. We've lost some really incredible leaders in our community over the past couple of weeks. And these were people that really gave of themselves to our community. And so I just pray for those families that are going through those losses right now. And I just pray that the Lord just reach down and wrap His loving arms around each one of those individuals and just comfort them during this time. I also just have a quick prayer of comfort that I wanted to read. "You hold time within your hands and you see it all from beginning to end. Please keep and carry these precious people in their sadness and loss. Cover them with your great wings of love. Give their weary hearts rest and their minds some sleep. Lord, lift their eyes so that they may catch a glimpse of eternity and be comforted by the promises of heaven. We ask all this in Jesus's precious holiness." That's all. Go Katy Tigers.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. And happy birthday on the 18th.
Thank you.
On the lighter note, there is happy news. That's your next birthday. But again, you know, it has been a sad week for Katy, losing David, Sharon, Dr. Bing. I met all of these people 40 some odd years ago when I moved to Katy and they were all fine friends, wonderful people and did so much more for this community than people realize. It, it's, like I said, it's just a sad week for Katy. But on a brighter side, congratulations to the Katy Tigers for making this state playoffs again. I wish y'all all the luck. You've worked hard, got a wonderful coaching staff, great cheerleaders, great trainers, great community behind you. So good luck on Saturday. We'll all be here in town or I'll be in town rooting for you. A lot of y'all will probably be at the game. But anyway, good luck to you. We can't wait to read you that proclamation when you get home. If there's no further business, we're going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The time is 5:41 and we will adjourn this meeting. Y'all have a great Y'all have a great weekend.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.